To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, approval of the agenda presented.
So move support.
They moved by Brett's port of math?
No, moved by Matt, port by Brett.
Okay. Okay, any question on the agenda before we go? Not all in favor, signify as an aye.
Aye.
All those who know, motion to pass seven zero. Item four, approval of the regular board of education minutes. Actually should say special meeting, board of education from the I first. Cause I want to have a regular discussion.
Support.
Uh, can move off support.
I'm not lying, I vote Jake. I'm gonna get Jake's part from Brett. Through the minutes, from the I first. Not in favor, signify as an aye.
Can I discuss?
Okay, let's discuss.
Okay, um, so they're kind of, okay, but when it comes to the goals, they're kind of listed a little kibbie. So I think the goals should be listed as that sheet that we have, that we agreed on, and not the way it's listed as each individual goal. Cause it doesn't really define what we, what we agreed on. If anybody else looked at the minutes.
Did anybody else look at it?
Yeah, I did, I got, correlate them back to the sheet, yeah.
I can move on to anything like that. I have trouble bringing up the financial data in the board meeting, or.
They don't get sent to us, you gotta look it on the website.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, what I try to look at, I know. And if I try to turn it, it never brings it to my eyes. So I can really admit I didn't come in, I didn't agree with anything.
I mean, those were the general headings though from that sheet, yeah.
Right, but it won't be a good, it won't be a good thing to go back and look at our minutes and see what we agreed on. Where if we have the, the listing of what that page was, or.
Would you be agreeable to that, to those seven things, and then from the MHS.
Right, just reference that page somewhere in that, in that set of notes, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, and I think that, that's good, MASP's, um. Goal format is discussed, do you have that, Candy?
So you just want me to reference the page?
Yeah, yeah.
We've been a few.
What does that page, um, attached as a, as an attachment, yeah.
Thanks, glad to answer.
Okay, are we good now with that stipulation we approved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor of the corrected minutes, signify as an aye.
Aye.
All opposed to no, motion carries seven zero. Item five, Sparkstar, Mr. Ellison.
Sparkstar is a little different, we don't normally do it this way, but I, I was extremely appreciative that, uh. Some students, um, that were part of the Explore Education Grants, that were uncomfortable with the, um.
Setup.
And, and Mindy Grant was, um, willing to step up and, and actually took the students down, um, to Florida to be able to participate in that, at the national. Educational competition, um, and I'm glad that they got to experience that, and I appreciate that, um, you stepped up and doing that to make them more happy. Thank you, and that's why I, I did do many grants to Sparkstar, which is, I'd say, eight total. Thank you.
Okay, item six, public comment, anybody got a comment this time? Yes?
My last question.
Okay, you did it yourself, so.
Okay. It's nice to see there's no police here today, um, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Brett Winer, he was the one that had them brought here last meeting. Or not, either or.
He doesn't have to answer, you have to.
Oh, I know he doesn't have to, but he could.
And I, well, they're not supposed, they're supposed to let me insert, and my comment would be, I don't know.
Okay.
I'd never heard who got that.
I'm trying to find out, my original FOIA was partially denied, so I FOIA'd the nine one one center, it's also county records. And it's interesting that some county records aren't available to the county clerk, and, uh, which is coincidence that Brett Winer is the council account commissioner. Just a bunch of coincidences, so I have a petition here, which was signed by thirty people, a lot of people, of them, a lot of people refused to sign because they don't want to be targeted. And harassed by people, but I would like to enter this into your minutes, hopefully you would like to. Read that out loud for everybody?
Um, I can read that, read it in three minutes.
I can't read it in three minutes.
Yeah, especially since we're very used to.
Well, last time he was kind of upset.
It will be known as a, we call it.
Grantation.
Communication. I will announce.
Can it be grantation for communication?
Communication from my pleasure.
Well, and thirty other people.
Okay. I can, I can do that.
Cause last time I did it and only seven people signed, six or seven, and you said that only I was the one that was.
Well, I re, I re, I.
This is a different one.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and then a lot more. I will announce that when we get to correspondence, wherever it's hiding, it's hiding.
Okay, well, last thing is that, the one that I had entered last time is correspondence, didn't get read, didn't get addressed, even though it was entered in properly. Uh, it wasn't even touched on by anybody on the board. Uh, people just want the board to actually speak on the matter and have a discussion on it, it would be, I think it's appropriate.
Unfortunately, it's about an investigation.
You don't have to, yeah, ongoing investigation, you don't have to speak on personal issues, you don't have to name names, but there is a process involved in that investigation. And the people would like to know where that process started, how, how it began, where it's going, where we're at, because we're losing students, we're losing teachers. I mean, it's a big deal, even though nobody's here, nobody wants to give up their summer day to come watch you guys do nothing, I don't blame them.
I will bring this up in correspondence, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Ranger, athletic director report.
We had some new coaching hires, um, for, uh, well, we just had to end up with the nationals for, for trap, and from my understanding from reading it, I guess we did fairly well. So, uh, for a small team that went up there, uh, we represented Waller, string of the wall up there. Uh, new coaching hires for trap, we got, um, Nathan Douglas, who is here today. Um, softball coach is, uh, Bob Hines, uh, girls' basketball coach is Arianna Howard, and she's a young, she's like twenty-three, so she'll have a mentor, kind of like an assistant coach to watch over her. You know, kind of like the guide. Um, JV basket, boys' basketball coach, uh, came available last week, it has been posted, um. Coach Law and I have, uh, have conversated, I know he's got someone in mind, but I just wanted to close it, just to make sure no one internally wanted to, wanted to, to apply. Uh, summer conditioning for football, volleyball, both boys' and girls' basketball, and cross-country have, uh, continued. Uh, weight room still is open, it's been open for the past six weeks, uh, been open pretty much, uh, Monday through Thursday from ten AM to two PM. Uh, otherwise, unless it's been, uh, somewhat dated or noted, um, and not a whole lot of, uh, participation. As a matter of fact, I've had no one show up for those, uh, weight lifters from ten to two, so, but I still, uh, it's no, you know, it's no skin off my back. I look when I'm, when I'm in there anyway, so it's.
I, I talked to a grandson, but it took more ambition than he has.
Well. Uh, it's just, you know, I mean, I get kids saying that they need, they need, they can't come, the conditioning's in the afternoon, they need more time, so I'm giving them this time, and then all of a sudden I get none. So, you know, um, um, so it's made available, the weight room, they can come in and shoot baskets if they want to, they could use the indoor, uh, um, banning facility that I, or banning machine that I have. Um, you got volleyball that they can, they, they can do lots of things, it's not weightlifting, you know, they just gotta learn to come in and take advantage of it. And I don't expect them to stay for four hours, come in for an hour, half hour, forty-five minutes, whatever. So. Um, and like I said, it's made available, I've had no students come in, so. And I quit this almost daily on, on Thrill Share. So it, it's not like it's not known. Uh, we talked about co-op and certain sports, cross-country track, um, some, some possible high school and girls' sports, especially starting next year probably. Um, numbers are gonna be the issue with that, so I don't know if you wanna, um, and I've talked to Pittsburgh, talked to Mr. Berger about co-op and, uh, he's off for it, and we just have to kind of. Take the initiative on that.
What, so for some of those sports, like the sprinting sports, uh, co-op, Mike, what would be the deadline to do that, to register with the NHS that day?
My understanding is you gotta do it a couple months in advance, so cross-country would be pretty hard, but I know when we did wrestling with Morance, they come here for, uh, do it, uh, like a month in advance, or a couple weeks in advance. Cause it was such late notice, and I didn't know at that time how many kids actually wanted to wrestle.
Um, on those other conditionings, you know, rough numbers, or still forgetting girls' basketball?
Uh, girls' basketball, we've had, the most we've had show up has been, um, for three high school girls, and five junior high girls are most, eight more have been most extended.
About volleyball?
Um, I was there today, I think they, they, they had, I wanna say eight to ten there today, but then again, that's between junior high and high school. And I know, I know they've been doing, um, some volleyball competitions at Siena High time Tuesdays, and they've had six girls go. Only six.
About football?
Uh, for football, we, um, they had six on six last Wednesday or Thursday, and I'll bet you there was a good twelve, thirteen kids there. So the numbers for football's good. So, and basketball, boys' basketball, uh, I came down Monday, and they had twelve kids there, they could run five on five, and that's what they did. And that's all high school kids, you know, they're there.
But none of these practices are mandatory, so.
No, they're not.
Right, so you can't get a good ad number yet?
No, you know, but, you know, the thing is, is, you know, I mean, I, I hear from the kids all the time, I don't have, I can't make conditions in the afternoon because I'm working on the farm or whatever, so I'm giving them time from ten to two. And I don't get, and no kids work, I get it.
Do you think the farm stocks there through the?
Oh, I, I get that, but then, you know, then I don't wanna hear, hear people complain that they don't have time to come in, when, when we're making, making it available for them. I mean, I get it, I mean, I, I had a job, I worked when I was in high school, I get that, you know, but, you know, somewhere down the line, we're, we're gonna have to make some, you know, commitment. You know, I mean.
Football thinks it's.
I know, I know it's somewhere.
Football thinks it's mandatory.
For what?
Football thinks it's mandatory.
Well, I, I, I get that, and, but, but, I understand that it's not mandatory, I mean.
Yeah, but.
You know, for, for summer, for summer conditioning, when they got, you know, ten, twelve kids there, gee, that's a good number for us.
Yeah, that's what I meant, football thinks it's mandatory. One that doesn't have that ambition to make a weight room thinks football's mandatory.
Say that again?
One that doesn't have time to make a weight room thinks football's mandatory.
Okay, well, that, I, I can't help.
Because otherwise you won't play, he thinks that, and that's fine, cause he comes every day.
For condition?
One of them comes every day.
Well, I get that, and I know, I know.
I'm glad, I'm glad, whoever's getting convinced me to come, I'm glad.
And I get that, and I, and I, and I understand, you know, people work, and kids have things to do, and blah, blah, blahs, whatnot, but I know there's some others that are just sitting at home playing video games, or playing on their phone, or doing whatever, they could be in that weight room. And then I'm, I'm hearing things during the whole school year, you know, I, we just don't have time, um, you know, whatever, why, that's why our, our sports aren't as good, because we don't have the time, you guys don't give us the time to do it. Well, I've been doing this for five years. Coming into the weight room. So. You know. Um. Other than that.
Any questions, Mr. Ranger?
Just thank you for making available, we can, unless I make them come, but I appreciate you putting the effort to make available one.
I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not a big issue to me, and I, and I understand, you know, kids work, I get it, you know, but. If we wanna compete with, with the regular Christians, and, you know, the Pittsburgh's and whatnot, we got lots of time in, we got lots of time in, if that's something.
So. At eight, board committee reports, finance committee, which better?
Well, we discussed the state aid note, and that we're gonna be asking for six hundred and fifty thousand, and our worst month in December, we're gonna be around five hundred and seventy-nine thousand that we're gonna be needing, so that's why they set it at that. Um, last year, we set our state aid note at seven hundred and fifty thousand, so that's the difference between the two years. On the budget, we asked a couple of questions on, um, the difference in the principal retirement, superintendent retirement, and the numbers there, and, um. We discussed filling the student success advisor position, and filling it with a part-time crew as opposed to a full-time, uh, person, and the difference, um. With the fact that all the other schools have always offered the same, the same classes, the same work-based learning, but with the full-time position we had, since twenty twenty-one, when that position became full-time. We gained twenty-four new students from other schools just because of that, those things we offer with early middle college and work-based learning, and thirteen students had returned to Waldron that had previously left Waldron. And we discussed the fact that those students aren't just one year, they're here for four years, and now, will, with the fact that we're gonna run a partial position there, will these students go back to their home districts that are offering the same thing? Um, without the benefit of the full-time position we had before, and without much, uh, without much of an answer. We discussed the sixty-one S grant that the FFA got to build the barn and the computers they got, and the fact that, that, all that paperwork is due by August first to show, to file the receipts that we've, um, filled out so far, or got filled out so far. And there was an email today that said we haven't even acted like we built anything yet, so we've got two weeks to file the paperwork, or the school's gonna be on the hook for every bit of the dollars that have been spent. So, then we also discussed an employee still not having their retirement fixed. And that is the finance committee report.
Any questions?
Oh, no, one more thing, since I got the floor, I would like to discuss our trap team kids that competed this week, this weekend, cause it was three full hot days, and they were amazing in the heat, and were just wiped by time was over with. We had Isaac Feather, Caleb Feather, Nick Evers, Troy Champlow, and Haley Champlow. Um, Nick, Nick and the other four competed as the team on Friday, and they did awesome, uh, Troy got a twenty-five patch that day, so he shot a perfect round. The next day, we did individuals where Isaac, Caleb, Troy, and Haley all shot, Isaac got a twenty-five patch and missed transferring on the top four hundred on Sunday by thirty-one students, and by one, he was one play off. He shot a ninety-five, and they transferred on at ninety-six, so he only missed five plays out of a hundred on Saturday, so that was pretty cool. And Haley, um, she shot three perfect twenty-fives out of the weekend, um, and made it to the final day, she shot a ninety-eight on Saturday, so, um, it was a good weekend for the Walden trap kids. They represented us very well and made a problem. That's my report.
All right, any questions? Hey, Joey and Brown, Mr. Winer?
Um, we're getting ready to, next week or two, do a walkthrough, so if there's anything you guys want us to address or look at, um, for the walkthrough, let us know, that's, that's all I have.
Item nine, super minute, report, Mr. Ellison.
Well, staffing updates, uh, food service right now, we have, uh, Karen McNett that, um, has agreed to help out in that position. She's going to be, continue to be an aide in the morning, and then help out specifically in the kitchen in the afternoon. Um, as well as making sure she gets the reports or whatever she said she would do after hours, and, um, the special ed secondary, we do have an application and, and to fill that position. Um, we have not done an interview yet, but, um, that application came in a couple days ago, and then the, um, the secondary advisor role right now, we have, uh, people that are, are filling in some roles. I have a few different people that are helping to, uh, work with the do enrollment, the scheduling, and, um, we set up a communication today to, um, contact one person, so that they can either handle it or get it to the correct person, so that we can make sure that, uh, the students are getting all of those supports and services. Um, and then I do have the student handbook for you today, which I've printed for you, the highlights are in yellow, a lot of them are, a lot of recommendations this year were basically summarized, well, it was already in there, a lot of that was, so if you have a chance to look that over, I know the first day of school will be the next four years. So, um, I just want, so I did highlight yellow, there weren't, oh, a ton of changes, but the ones that were there were, like I said, a lot more, you're kind of summarizing the detailed information that's below on that a lot of them, um, and then it did you the year change and, uh, staffing changes for context. That's it?
Want to talk about the handbook, or?
Yep.
Point of interest, I guess, we've had issues with, sounds like teachers allowing students to play phones and whatnot in the free time, I would think it would be interesting to look at. Some sort of, uh, write-up system if the teachers are caught letting the kids, you know, play on the phone, or.
To me, that wouldn't be a student handbook.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, that wouldn't be a student handbook necessarily, but I think that's something we need to look at, because, you know, they're just, the teachers are the first round of, uh, implementing our, our, our policies.
It is one, it is one of the new changes in the handbook, it's highlighted.
Well, yeah, but it's not for, are you talking this handbook, or?
Yeah, it's a student handbook, it's a draft.
Right, but unfortunately, there's some teachers that are open to letting the kids use them, you know, when they're done, which, in my opinion, it satisfies as the kid, uh, rushed to the job, and, you know, have free time surfing the internet, which, for one, is a waste of school education time, and two, we don't know what they're, they're looking at, so I think we need to figure out a way to crack down on that, and if that's holding teachers accountable to hold the policy, then we need to do that.
It's also been in the handbook, or it must just be written differently this time, or it's been in the handbook, um, that they didn't have a ton of have their phones.
I have a couple questions, and I should have asked them only for, do we have a list of the new coaches you can get to us?
I can.
Because.
New coaches?
Yeah.
The ones that decide.
Candy's going to tread those minutes, I was gonna say.
I gave, I gave it to the.
Okay, so she's got it, I gave her this, it would be nice.
I can make a copy of it right now for you.
And the other question is. Yeah, print a list of new staff, because.
Print a list of new staff.
Is it staffing up?
Oh, the, 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 who's doing, what do you mean?
Well, the one we hired a couple of people.
Oh, I, no, I haven't hired anybody yet, they're, they're filling the roles right now, that's what's happening right now, yes.
That part I do.
Okay, okay.
I have, I have a question, then, with the kitchen, um, the person taking over the kitchen, have you discussed salary?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as, um, it's more of a, with her, it's more of a stipend, she, she had a choice, she wanted, um, care, wanted insurance, and so the cost of it was just too much, so she'll still have to pay a little bit for her insurance, so she will, she will get that and pay the insurance.
At some point in time, will you bring that type of stuff to the finance committee and?
Yep.
You know, and, and it passed us?
I, I will, yes, the final invasion was today, we spoke with her a little bit more today, but.
Okay, and then, are there any reports right now that are being missed? Does she know what reports need to be, being filled out? Is she on top of that, or we have stuff being missed?
I don't believe so, it's not being missed on where we're right now.
Like, will you?
There's a timeline a little bit more than I care about, which I'm pushing to, to get, uh, a little bit before closer to the, the deadline, the deadline.
So someone, I'm just assuming, should probably reach out to another school and ask their head kitchen lady and staff what they're, uh, you know, filing right now, what they're doing this summer, and see if there's something we need to be doing.
Oh, for Karen, yeah, and Karen has been, she reached out to, I apologize, I thought you were talking about the financial stuff around, and she's in there quite well.
Louis, I think that she's looking at Karen, to try to make sure that everything's.
Okay, I, I agree.
I have, um, one statement or question on the harassment, we had a lot of reports of the bullying being a problem, and. Our president even mentioned we need to deal with this, considering we do have a problem, and we have the, um, reporting mechanisms that are in place, do we have reports, can we have paper trail of. Somebody reporting on being bullied and the action being taken? To make sure that it stops?
Yeah, I, there would, there would be, yes, there are a lot of other reports you're talking about, we're not, they were kids beating each other, bullying is one of the long-term, I think, so that's where usually the investigation goes through, but yes, we, we, I try to follow that as closely as possible, I think, it's deemed to be bullying.
So if somebody reports it, we know, if they have a kid reported three times, we know three times, if it reports it one time, we know one time it happened, we know when it's happening, and we got. we know when it's happening, and we got a paper trail, electronic trail of some sort.
Is there any certification that Karen's gonna need?
Yes, she's working on it currently, yes.
Does she have to have that by a certain date before she can do anything?
Not that I understand, they have V-ray, but I'll, I'll check in for her, but she seems to have a pretty big grasp on it, she already has the classes completed, she has to take the test.
What is that, certification?
I, I don't know what it means, but.
That's a cert save.
Or say, serve, is that?
Cert, cert save.
Cert save, I knew it was something like that, but I didn't, yeah, so.
I believe, or, in that, something that every restaurant owner has to have their, that takes, so.
We have, item number ten, is the correspondence that you got, and I just got to send out a E Q.
I will read this petition submitted by Mr. Lashway, signed by several community members. We call for the resignation of Superintendent Sean Ellison, Waldron Area Schools. We, the undersigned parents, staff, students, and community members of Waldron Area Schools are calling for the immediate resignation of the Superintendent Sean Ellison, due to a pattern of mismanagement, lack of transparency, and actions that have harmed the trust, safety, and well-being of our school community. Superintendent Ellison has allowed and took part in student interviews for an investigation without parental presence or consent, retaliated against students participating in peaceful protests, failed to call an emergency meeting despite public outcry and disruption to school functioning, created a culture of fear among staff, discouraging open dialogue, forcing staff to follow immoral and unethical leadership decisions. Escalated tensions to the point that law enforcement was called to a public board meeting without explanation to the community for no reason, in an, in a, in an attempt to intimidate the community. These actions have placed the district at risk legally, financially, ethically, and morally. We demand leadership that is fair, transparent, and accountable. We respectfully call for the Waldron Area School Board of Education to place a formal vote on the agenda and accept the resignation of Superintendent Sean Ellison without further delay.
I have no old business, I don't have any old business listed, other than to discuss when we want to do the mid-year update for the evaluation.
That should've been July, I believe, if I'm wrong.
No, we, we missed that, we had a closed setting session.
The, the mid-year update comes from Sean, he gets us the mid-year progress report of how he's doing towards the goals.
So.
If he brings that to us next month.
Yeah, I, I, we need to discuss what, because we didn't get the goal set till the middle of July.
Right, so he can tell, he can tell us where we're at, right now, towards those goals.
Yeah, he can, yeah, but he can present it next month and have it kind of ripped out, so. That was, that was the only old business I had, was to keep progressing on that, so that we don't fall further down. I don't have any other old business. Item twelve, new business, A is considered payment of monthly general fund bills.
Move to approve the bills as presented.
Support.
Moved by Grant, Spark, and Jake, pay the general fund bills, any individual questions or comments on any of the bills?
Yes, we did not get the bills until today. The financials that we got sent to us Tuesday at one forty-something in the afternoon, did not have the bills on it. It only had the monthly financials of the year-to-date. We asked at the last meeting even, at the superintendent evaluation meeting, to have our stuff by at least Monday. Now, this time, we didn't even get the bills that we've paid until we sat down here today. We really need to get our financials a little ahead of time.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, all in favor of paying the general fund bills, is moved by Grant, Spark, and Jake, send it by the thing, aye?
Aye.
All opposed to know? Motion, Carrie, seven zero. Item B, consider approving the twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six to the handbook. You have a copy in your packet. As Sean mentioned, there are yellow highlighted areas, those are the changes, otherwise, there. It's the same as last.
So move.
That's Matt.
Yep.
Moved by Matt, Spark, and Grant. Approve the handbook as presented, any other questions or comments on the handbook? All in favor of approving the handbook, send it by the thing, aye?
Aye.
All opposed to know? Motion, Carrie, seven zero. What time is it, six, seven, thirty-eight?
Seven forty-six, seven thirty-eight, seven.
Item C, consider approving the state aid note.
I move to approve the state aid operating note, res- borrowing resolution, seek bids for the borrowing of the six hundred and fifty thousand.
Support.
Any questions on the resolution or the note that's there? Okay, all in favor?
Uh, it's a resolution, Mr. President, I would request a resolution, borrowing resolution.
Can we start, can we start?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
B?
Yes.
In the. Your opinion?
Yes.
You?
No.
And Dick will, yes. So, Carrie is six one? Item thirteen, I make your discussion. I should probably put the. The whole thing there, but I thought I would put this to the right one, so.
It was brought to my attention by a community member that the board might look at making a policy about board member spouses being employees of the district, so I don't know if that's something that we need, wanna discuss, or just leave it as it is.
Well, the only thing I could say to that is, we're such a small district, that it's been a problem in the past, getting anyone to do anything. We used to have, well, I don't know, a board member, so when you have a limited pool, you sometimes have to get, you have relatives to do things, 'cause some schools, no relation, walk and work for you, you get, you have to get off the board. Well, as small as we are, you might not have anybody work for you.
We do have policy, if you read through the O L, there's plenty of policy for spouses and family members working together, and I would challenge, if we did have a policy on that, if we set a separate one, we should definitely set one on family members sitting on the board together, 'cause we don't even have that in the O L. But it's in the policy, for spouses, if anybody brings it up, you can, totally can even look it up on the website. That way, there isn't a conflict of interest. Um, I have one thing, do we have a plan B for what happens if we don't have staff show up for the first day of school, or students, and we can't run our school? Have you been, have you been thinking of a plan B for this mess?
For nobody showing up, no, I don't know.
Then maybe you should.
If, if no one shows up, it obviously, yeah, it's not a school, so I don't.
Have you thought ahead of any of the scenarios that could happen, or what's been going on?
Not that specific one, no, have I, do I have, uh, if, if there's some people that don't, yes, I have a plan B, there are some people that have, I have some, some.
So, if we had teachers not show up, three, four, two, would you then just have us running and teaching our students with long-term subs again, like we have in the past?
If that's what it came down to, I can't hire people in case somebody doesn't show up, but that's what.
I understand, but I'm wondering if you're thinking ahead, or if you haven't even thought about it?
I, I, I am, yes, I am attempting to, to plan as best I can, but, no, I mean, what you're talking about, yes, that would be a bigger problem than just that first day of school.
Any other ideas, can you discuss?
Move to it, Karen.
Support.
Moved by Grant, Spark, and Matt, two, the jury number is all eight forty.
Seven forty.
Seven forty-two.
Yes, seven forty. All in favor, super, by the thing, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Carrie is six one?
You have the, you have the top. But that's, that's not well.
Hey, the gym's working for you, looking good.